Good evening, I'd like to open the planning board meeting for this evening. My name is Rachel McManus and to my left is...
Leslie Matthews.
And to my right?
Pete Pickos.
Martha Leahy.
Martha Taylor Town Planner.
First up tonight, we have an appearance from Felice Bonfro for Walk My Paw LLC, a submission of a special permit application for animal daycare.
Yes.
Would you like to come up?
Absolutely.
Commit?
Yes. I have no copies. It's a little out of order, excuse me, because staples, it's...
Yeah.
I picked it up here, it's double sided, which I wanted single sided.
At least you're conscious that they land on...
Yeah.
So just to let you guys know, I'm going to need to collect these at the end so I can understand them.
Oh, okay.
But you're welcome to look at them.
Okay. Can we finally meet you?
Martha?
Yes, yes, nice to meet you. We've had a lot of phone conversations.
So I guess we need to figure out whether we have all the requisite parts here for the submission.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little different from our normal submission. I don't know, do you want to just, just describe, we can't say too much outside of the public hearing, but if you want to just describe very briefly what you're doing?
Sure.
It's going to be going to a space.
Yeah, I'm running a space of 90 degree turnpike, as you know. It's a, it's not a daycare, it's not a doggy daycare, it's a play care. So when I started the business, I was, I used to walk dogs and the dogs didn't get enough exercise. So I'm training, so I figured, get a space, let them run around, train them, small groups, five, maybe eight dogs, nine dogs, and one-on-one, so proper, it's nothing negative, it's all positive. So they're getting trained, they're getting socialized when they come. So I pick them up, five, six dogs, seven dogs, bring them to the place for an hour, hour and a half, two hours, drop them off. So it's not an all-day thing, so it's not a doggy daycare where people are driving in, dropping dogs off, it's just me driving in and out, you know? Pick up a, pick up a group, drop off the group, pick up a group, drop off the group, you know? So it's basically maybe three or four groups a day, you know, very small. Because I can't take care of more than six, seven dogs, keep them under control, and basically that's what I do. You know, I started off as a dog walker, so then now, I'm hoping to expand.
Good. So I'm just looking through this, it looks like, oh, never mind. Yes, you're right, some things are a little out of order here.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
The application is a little inside out here and stuff like that, but I think we had talked about the application form, the narrative, which is here.
Yeah, you can set that.
Yeah. Some zone information, the, so the butters, the butters list, the general letter concern. So I think, you know, I think the basics are here, I've reviewed the narrative. So it does talk about what he's planning to do, proposed hours of operation and things like that.
And there will be, you know, a little outside area that I would make. It's, it's going to be pea gravel with chain link fence, privacy screen around it. So the dogs won't go crazy if people walking by, driving by. And basically, it's going to be pea gravel, it's for the dogs to go outside really themselves. It's more, it's more step...
What's that?
Pea gravel, yeah, it's more sanitary. Instead of having grass and dirt where it sucks into the, into the soil. So there, I can pick it up, dispose of it, and then a couple times a week, have them come pick it up. So I'm going to give them a station, this place inside the pen.
Yeah.
But most of the time, we're going to be inside training, it's going to have a lot of obstacles and things like that. It's, it's for the dogs to have fun, so if they go home, they sleep the rest of the time until they're...
That's the idea, that's good.
Yeah, I want it like that, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, so we've all got all our parts in order here, I guess we'll have to set the, the date?
Accept the application and set, oh, I set a hearing date.
Okay. So have a motion to accept the...
I move that we accept the application for Walk My Paw LLC, submission for a special permit, animal daycare, daytime only, 90 Newbury Court Turnpike, map, RF 36, Lot 19, property number 86, Newbury Court Turnpike, Trust, anything, those, trustee, this is not a... Your first name again?
Felice.
Felice?
Yes.
Bonfro?
Bonfro, yes.
Okay, great.
That's why they, I didn't know, put Phil there, they put Phil because a lot of people, Felice, it's the Italian.
Yeah.
Excellent.
On favor?
The public hearing date.
The public hearing date, that's one.
Two seconds.
So the, there's not enough time for advertisement for the, for its next hearing. Because it needs to be advertised about 14 days before. The board's first hearing in July is the third. So.
We've got to figure out how that sits with the board anyway.
I'm on it with this. You're around? I hope that Larry and George...
Are you around?
Yes.
Uh, we're in town.
Well, I guess we could do it if...
Martha, are you around?
If that's enough time.
So let's have a barbecue first.
Play chicken.
Is that better?
No, bro.
All right, so...
I would, I would make a motion that we set a public hearing date for the special permit application for the 3rd of July, July 7, 15.
7:15, seven town, we're going on 7:15.
7:15.
I'm second.
On favor?
Aye.
And just as a reminder, it is a special permit, so it requires a super majority and four out of five. Sure, so. Yeah, so hopefully Larry can make it.
Well done. Thank you. Thanks for listening to my spiel.
Appreciate it, it's fine.
Good luck.
Extra coffee's down there? So I've got, I've got five, I've got five copies here, are there any others for the...
How many were there supposed to be?
Nine.
Do you have some copies, I need nine and a half. Yes.
Rachel, I don't, so...
Oh, you?
Just checking my dates again. I think that's the answer. Hello, George.
I don't want to be humbling either.
And we just go to the financial report, payroll wise, the town planner and planning administrator, administrative assistant for payroll 1923, for pay period ending, ending in 5, 11, 2019, pay period 1924, ending in 5, 25, 2019, PC number stipend payroll worksheet.
That's, oh. As you recall, at the October special town meeting, the town did vote for a stipend for all the planning board members. Originally, when we had talked about it, everybody said, well, let's just do it once a year in December, but because we've had changes in the board membership, I think it's said that it needed to be prorated. So the first one was for July 1st through April 30th, and then I think there'll be one more for the rest of the year, rest of the fiscal year, which ends on June 30th.
Okay, gotcha. And then my planning board expense invoices, employee expense reimbursement for Martha Taylor, 520, 2019, Verizon Wireless Planning iPad monthly charge, 523, 2019, MBTC expense invoices, pictometry invoice, N E W B P I C T I O C 1718-2, May 8, 2019, escrow account, Newbury Golf Center escrow for Joe Swatka, site inspections for May 8, 2019.
So I'll be there anyway, so we're close enough by the time everybody gets organized.
So I guess we would like to call the board of selection up for the public hearing. I don't know what I like. They're missing. Not in the picture. You're welcome.
Would you like to...
Wherever.
You could squish them.
Oh, I have. One time I was sitting...
Do you have your back to it?
If I could get a motion to open for my...
I haven't opened yet.
Oh, you haven't opened?
No.
Oh, you go ahead.
Thank you.
I assume we were late.
Not yet, we're waiting. Okay, I'd like to continue the public hearing for modifications to a previously approved site plan submitted by Eric Sorensen, president of Newbury Golf Center Inc., for the Newbury Golf Center on Scotland Road. Applicant requests approval on the proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project. Just as a note, this, any votes require briefing to the planning board. The original site plan was approved on November 15, 2017. And just also as a note, George Morris has, we've received his Mullen Rule certification for absence of a public hearing session held on April 9, 2019.
Now it's my turn, sorry, jumping the gun. So I get a motion to open our meeting, and then I'll read the notice for the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Town of Newbury Board of Selection Public Hearing Notice risen to the Town of Newbury and other interested persons. Please note that on Wednesday, June 5, 2019, at 7:15 in the second floor public hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Office, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass., 01922, the Newbury Board of Selecting will hold a public hearing to consider an application submitted by Eric Sorensen, president of the Newbury Golf Center Inc., for modification of the special permit for the Newbury Golf Center 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road, assessment map RF 43, lots 2, 11, and 4B, granted by the Selectmen on November 15, 2017. The applicant requests approval of the proposed plan to restore areas of disturbance outside the approved limit of work for the project as shown on the drawing entitled 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road Disturbance Plan of Land, Sheet 1 of 1 dated April 9, 2018, and 131, 133, and 151 Scotland Road Buffer Zone Mitigation Plan, Sheets 1 and 2 of 2 dated April 30, 2018, and described in the supporting documents prepared by Meriding Associates and LEC Environmental Consultancy. The application also requests release of a stop work order in order to implement their remediation plan and stabilize the overall site. The application is on file for a review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the Selectmen's office, 12 Kent Way, Byfield, Mass. For more information, contact the Selectmen's office, 978-465-0862, extension 301. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed restoration proposals should hear at the time and place designated above. J.R. Colby, Chairman of the Newbury Board of Selecting. That was published May 21st and May 28th, 2019. So we have a new board member joining the hearings because of the change in the board, and so that's why we had to re-publish this. And to be right into the record, to the Honorable Vice Chairman of the Newbury Board of Selecting, the Newbury Town Planner, I would recuse myself from the Newbury Golf Center public hearings, respectfully, J.R. Colby. So yeah, I think we are now open and ready to commence.
So I think as you all know, we typically will go to the applicants for an update, and then we'll go to the board for questions and comments. Anything you have?
Nope.
Let me give this, Martha?
The free card, yes.
Okay. All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, kind of update everybody, a couple of you have been out there, obviously the weather's played a huge role in what's been going on. Example, last week, we were shut down for two days, three included holiday, just couldn't move the machines around. So there was a couple other days prior to that, tomorrow was a little promising. So it's affected the, our schedule, we're a couple weeks behind, it's affected how he's worked on the, on the project. So let me kind of run everybody through where we're at with everything, people who have been out there. He's done the area in front of the pond, the berm, we've seeded, we're actually getting germination, it's actually coming in really well all the way here, finished that up today, the side of it, and really getting the, around this pond area to grade. He's, the T-bonc's starting to get a little bit of grade up in here, all the high areas, he's starting to get graded. He would like to start the driveway and cut this area in, I know it is on the conditions here. Hasn't been able to do much back here because of the weather. Getting these machines back here is, is tough, odd days, two, three, four days after the rain. So he's been really concentrating rather than this front area and just getting the grades in here. Building isn't up yet, just because we need material in there to compact it roll. So, you know, day by day, hopefully in a week or two, we'll be able to do that. They're ready to go, but we've got to be able to get back there and get that material in there without being wet. So this is where he is here, you know, it's really just high ground. Every day's a challenge for where we stand now, so, you know, we would like to do that, but it's just, again, day by day. So I'll open up to questions, if anybody has any questions.
Sorry, just, just for point of clarification, our request this evening as part of tonight's presentation is to seek your permission under paragraphs E and F. Again, we're two weeks behind, and hopefully you've been able to see based on Mr. Miller's work at the site that he is professionally addressing and working on the areas based on weather conditions and proven to be responsible, informative, updating everybody every day. At this point, if he has to wait on E and F, there are going to be days where he just doesn't have any work to do based on weather conditions. So while he's out there and he's mobilized, and to the extent he can keep moving, we would like to see those two modified or, I guess, just approved, I believe is your language, that you have to approve it in writing to allow him to work on E and F. Okay. But I guess the, that's the conclusion of the presentation, open up to the board for questions.
Sure, I'd just like to ask how with your visitations have been going, what you've been seeing?
The, you know, what we've seen is that the progress is happening, there have been, you know, we've had a few issues, one was addressed right away with muddy water coming off the site, and we've had two instances of working late. But beyond that, things seem to be moving according to plan. They had been working in the second red area at one point. I've not been out in a while, so I don't know what has stopped them from working out there and how far they've gotten. It looked like they were getting close to having it graded when I was last on-site, but I would want to personally go out and look at it before signing off. I think as the conditions stand, Rachel and I could, could go out and look at it and decide if we wanted to sign off, whether the board can decide to go out as a, en masse and hold another hearing. Jeff?
A question probably to everyone but to Rachel and Martha. Has the consulting engineer had a report for us?
He's been, he's been touching base. He did report that, that things are progressing, but slowly, obviously, probably largely because of the weather. He did have, you know, some concern that, that priority area number two isn't being worked on, and, you know, wonders whether there might be some lighter equipment that could go out there or something so that that, that could progress. But, you know, he's, he's good at bringing issues to our attention, and there really haven't been any.
Could you explain, I'm sorry. Could you explain a little bit on the area back there of...
Area two?
Yeah, area two, when we were up there...
He was working right in the, it was somewhat dry.
Right.
You know, but it's just...
I mean, there were, there were muddy places, there's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
It was funny as we were sliding and slipping around.
Right.
And so it's just continued to be in that state for the...
It's just in that state, and to move equipment around is going to be more of a mess. So then the next day is just cleanup, he's not...
Right.
Maximizing his...
His time.
His time. So it's taking him long, if, you know, if he went out there, he's in mud all day, and the next day he's fixed it. I mean, one of the things, if you see the site, this guy's very detailed about everything he does, and the site's a machete. I mean, he rolls it all the time, and he is, and I think, you know, Mike, the engineering firm can attest that, the site, I mean, there's, you know, very, especially with the erosion control on him, you're just running more stone today to get ready for the storm tomorrow. So he just doesn't want to, you know, he opens that up, then you're bringing, you're bringing in more problems. You know, if you start ripping that up, and you get a rainstorm like tonight, you're going to have issues. So that's, you know, every three days it's raining. But it hasn't been a huge stretch of dry weather.
No, there hasn't.
Now, one of the things Scott had said at our last meeting was that it would take a number of days in a row of dry weather to be able to work on the driveway. The same is true for area two, and that's why we prioritized it, because we'd rather see that wetland protected and, and graded off, and that growing seeds that it is stable and safe in the future. And that was one of the issues, so if, my understanding was you couldn't work on the driveway area in wet weather, you can't work in the back area in wet weather, so why does change about working on the driveway?
One thing that's happened out here is that the winter rye is taken, so it's about three feet tall. So this is all secure out here now, versus this is all open soil, there's nothing here. So this is an area that should be a priority now to get this situated. Obviously, Mike can talk a little bit more about drainage and engineering, but this is secure with all that winter rye. So there's not, there's not an issue unless you open this area up.
Versus here.
Where you should dress, dress that area as soon as possible.
How close to complete is the potential farm?
Down here.
Oh, the other one?
Out here.
Whatever you're calling priority one.
Priority one. Oh, priority, this is done.
Okay.
This is done, this is seeded.
That's completed?
Yeah, this is done, seeded, and we have germination.
Eric, where's the shopping areas and shipping the honey greens?
In the front.
All right, that's what you're asking.
Yeah. I mean, he's going to have to take material from here, and so, I mean, it's not going to be finalized right away, but I think he's got to get in here and move some material around. And these two kind of go hand in hand, because he works smart, he doesn't want to move the material, he wants to move it, wants to move it to its final spot. He doesn't want to move it up, put it in a pile, touch it twice, bring it to its grade, get it done, move on.
And there was quite a bit of material that was going to move in that area, wasn't it?
Yeah, there's a lot of material here.
And where's it going to go?
And here. He, wherever he need, the shortest area where he needs to fill the grade, and that's, that's how he works. You know, he's going to have his grades and fill where he needs to. I mean, there was a big fill in here, there's a big fill over here. And it's got to be the right material to, you know, parking lot takes different material than, you know, a walking path.
How much hammering is left to do?
Probably three weeks, two to three weeks, the hammer's broken right now, it'll be back in two weeks.
Hammer's broken last time, was it?
That's, that's his hammer.
So is there, there's one week left of hammering?
No, it's a couple weeks left of hammering. And really, once you, you know, it's this area right here, one, two, and three spots that need to be hammered.
So you're at the end of July before handling's done?
He can get it back in two weeks, you know, if he can get it back in mid-June, could be done early in July with that.
So you can't finish those grades until that hammering's done, correct?
Well, the, the hammering's just out in the landing area right here, one, two, three. It's not in any of the building, any of the area. It's all up here, so it's really not...
So do you need to complete the grip, the hammering, before you can do any more work over there?
No, this is out of the way, the hammering's out of the way.
Eric, you're going to miss, you're going to seed that area then this year?
No, we'll be, I mean, it just depends, I mean, we're going to get it down, we're going to water it, we've got water on site, I mean, it just depends on, you know, the rye pops, so, you know, next we put the lower rye, it pops, so it really depends on the weather. If it stays cool enough, it will, it will come in.
What's a good time for you to meet these two at site, walk themselves?
Anytime you want.
Okay, so you want there all the time?
Monday through Friday, yeah. If you need the weekends, I can meet you on the weekend.
Yeah, it all depends on, I'm not going to coast bouncing yet, but I want to go next week, I guess.
I got a golf cart, so...
I got, oh, yeah.
That's easy. So I mean, I mean, one is the weather's dictating how it's, it's working, it's no secret. It's not, you know, if you could have done, you know, I would have loved him to do this and have this seeded down, that would have been my first choice, because this is going to take 30 to 40 days to grow in.
Damon?
Yep.
You know, for Mike, Alicia, and myself, maybe we could isolate, if we're looking at E and F, releasing those things tonight, or whatever, maybe we should look at the things that would stop us from not releasing those things, the detrimental aspects, that we're going to have mud across the road. I mean, maybe we should get into, you know, the consequences of why wouldn't we do that so that we answer those before we answer why we should do it?
Yeah.
I don't know if that makes any sense, I don't know if the engineer can tell us, or whatever.
Well, no, it's a very good point, because that was one of the reasons why that was put on hold, was that we didn't want a cut to go in there when things were so unstable in terms of mud. And now we still have mud, and you're asking to go cut that road.
Well, I think he's going to, and I think Mike can talk a little bit more on how it's going to, you know, he's going to create some ponds down here, and, you know, the big thing with the road is no trucks coming in and out of here, he's not going to cut it right through the road, he's just going to, you know, he's not going to open it up for traffic.
Right, that's understood, but still, it's like you're going to, it's a big cut.
It's a big cut, I mean, it's, it's a temporary cut, but, you know, there hasn't been any issues, you know, he's got the drainage all the way, I mean, there hasn't been any issues with the...
Right, and so that, I mean, that is also, it's a matter of, you know, given what we've seen so far and the way they have managed the site, given these wonderful conditions they had to go through, do we have enough confidence now to let them go forward with it?
Well, I think the only issue that I have is a, is that we asked for prioritization on the, the second area as well. I know that it's been hard to work on because of the weather conditions, but do we want to forego what we see as a vital area to be protected in order to just allow them to move more quickly on the rest of the...
Can I offer a suggestion? You prioritize them one, two, and three.
Yeah.
One is done. It does seem like if it's always a constant management of weather conditions, why wouldn't you open up three now that one is completed? I mean, at the end of the day, as you just said, the question is, for the past eight weeks, has Mr. Miller shown that he can manage the site and manage the weather conditions? And would there be a detriment in trusting Mr. Miller to do it? Because the alternative is, if you say no, you can only work on two, and when two is done, come back and talk about three. It's not going to get done this year. There are already...
I don't think, I don't think we've ever said that that's the way it had to be. Those were the three priority areas.
Exactly.
Area three, have you started work on area three, because it's not, to my recollection, that was drainage structures?
Yeah, he's getting grades all around here, so, until the cut.
Okay.
So he's got it down to where the cut is.
So he's telling me that three is pretty much done, area three is done, which was...
Area three, but he doesn't, he hasn't made the cut that, yeah, this is all drained, this is... This is all drained, this is all.
Okay, all right.
To grade and he has it all drained correctly. He's right here where it goes down to the ten foot cut to get it down to the road.
So if I can really honest, bringing out this mud on the road, there's, there's stuff on the road, you know. And if we still have a rainy season ahead of us and we're going to open this up, we're going to create more of a mud field on that hillside. It's going to be very difficult to control.
You're talking with this mud over here from the trucks coming in and out?
Right, just, you know, just from what's been going on.
Okay.
And so that's on roadway now, that's there today. So if we now start this cut and we continue with a couple, two more, three, three weeks of rain, which is quite conceivable, we're just going to create more of an issue onto that roadway.
Well, there's not going to be, he's not going to allow vehicles to come up here.
Right, but also you're not going to go cut all the way down to Scotland Road is what you just said.
He's going to create a pond.
And we're going to need an explanation from somebody as to how you're going to control.
They're going to have ponds.
If you do that cut. And also, we're going to need an explanation of if you want to do the short game area, how you're going to control that.
Right.
So we, I mean, I, I get, I understand why you want to do it. And I understand you've had some tough conditions.
Right.
But I think we need an explanation of how you're going to control it for us to give you any permission to go forth there.
And, and Rachel, not saying that there isn't some great brain power on these boards, but maybe when we do get the explanation, our engineer should look at it too. Because I'm not going to really be totally capable from a flat picture and your explanation to say, is that going to control any adverse conditions go out to Scotland Road? And the problem now is, you know, motorcycles and bicycles and everything else, you know, mud's an issue.
Yeah, so for the record, my name is Mike LaHamm, civil engineer with the Moore and Cameron Group. I've been, I've been one of the engineers out there doing the inspections, so familiar with the site. So I think what we had talked about, I recall that Scott Cameron had marked up a plan several months back that showed a couple segmentation basins down in here, like temporary segmentation basins in this area. So that's, that would be a critical piece in controlling that. Because right now, any of the runoff is being held up, up high, there's those couple basins up high. So you're right, when you, when you open it up, you'll need some controls down in here, temporary segmentation controls for sure. So that's, that's kind of what we had laid out at that time. And you would use silt fence, silt sock, I would anticipate check dams, you know, working your way down, making sure you're using check dams. And then you're talking about controlling truck traffic or not, not having truck traffic until it's.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, you could, right, and then you can, you could maintain a buffer in here, vititated buffer. And then typically, once that does get opened up, you would use larger rock, like a stabilized entrance from our construction site. So you would use that larger rock in there when you did want to open that up. But I think the critical piece will be temporary segmentation basins there that must be talked about.
Yeah, so my concern with this area is that if we have some of the rain that we have had recently, where we've had, you know, an inch and a half in an hour, that even with check dams and a, a couple of small ponds, that we're just going to overwash it all and be right on Scotland Road. And so I think for my comfort, I would want to do a site walk with our engineer and you guys and, and really make sure we had the numbers right. Because what I don't want to see is a river running from your building site down the roadway and out on the Scotland Road, which I can easily imagine happening if we get some of the torrential type rains that we've had.
I think that answers a lot of questions, Damon.
So if my board is comfortable with the idea, we could either schedule a group site walk or just to have Rachel and I go out with the engineering group and our town engineer and walk it. If you guys feel comfortable at the end of the meeting with that idea, if we've heard from the residents and everyone else, you can give their cast approval once we've reviewed it or say if you're not comfortable, whichever way you want to go.
So if, if we, either way, if we decide to walk it or we decide to just have you, Rachel, and Joe watch it, share an opinion, what comes next? Does that mean that you guys would give the approval or we would give the approval or we would have to come back to it and send another meeting?
I don't think, I think the whole reason Kevin has a point is that we didn't want to come back from.
Condition, condition E and F do specify that the two acting chairs can grant that authority. And, and we would greatly appreciate that because again, the goal is to get it as quick as possible and, and keep it moving.
I'm okay with that as long as, as long as Joe looks at it and you guys can be.
I definitely want his input before approving any changes to how we've laid things out. But having you guys give your input, if you're comfortable, I mean, we'd set out some orders of conditions. One and two, one and three have been worked on pretty aggressively, two is not. I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Some of it definitely hasn't worked up, but not to completion.
I mean, they were working when we were there.
Yeah, just not to completion because of the weather. When you go out there and you see that, you'll, you'll see.
I'd like to talk about some other areas, Jeff.
Yeah.
But just, just before you do that, Doug isn't up to full speed, is he, Mark?
Um, I think he's, he's doing part-time. And I do know, I will say that when we had talked about this before, he also was very concerned about opening that up. You know, having it be a conduit for water right down to Scotland Road.
So the only thing is if Doug can possibly go with you, that would be nice.
Okay. We can try and work that out if he's feeling up for it.
Squeaky chair, you know, like that one?
It's a new guy, we're always going to do it.
I can't move.
You got the squeaky chair, right?
Yeah. It was a setup, I know.
I usually get it.
If you need to get up and walk around, I'm not going to get anyone taken.
I guess I'm okay with you guys speaking for myself. You guys going out and taking a walk with Doug and Joe and these guys here and making a decision on whether or not you're comfortable allowing that cut to happen. I'm okay with that.
Is the planning board comfortable with that? But they won't, they won't go with it, they don't.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It makes, it's consistent with the conditions, has it, Rick? So that's where I go.
Then how about, how about?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
I, I'm going to be helpful with it, Eric, if, and I might not ask, but his mind usually asks, when the thing is in process, what happens if there was a failure? What do you do to stop that? I need to merge, I need a contingency plan of how, if you really have four days of rain and water starts coming down the hill, how does your engineer and the construction people intend to stop it? What do you got, what do you got? So whether it's fields or hay or what.
We have that stuff on site, but we'll have a plan.
But that's what we want to hear when we go there.
Yeah.
We don't want to get there and say, oh, I have to have them get back. We want the answer when we get up there.
And we want it submitted to us.
And we, we will have all that, but we do have erosion control stuff all on site anyways. We have paybales and.
Well, you, you should be well-practiced by that.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Eric, I imagine that some of that mitigation of water is going to happen way above where you're digging. You know, you're going to start to cut water off and divert it to the pond.
He's already, yeah, he's already done that up there.
That's going to be part of the plan, I imagine.
So I think you can talk to Joe, you know, Joe's been out there during storms and there's nothing coming down now.
Do we want to read the letters now or?
Yeah, because we really can't schedule it. I'd like to schedule the, the site walk as soon as we can, but since we don't know Doug's availability, we can't.
Do you want to buy an email?
Yeah.
You want tentatively pick a date? I mean, you will, you will vote for it?
And then change it if, you know, we just, Doug can't pick it up. I think Friday's probably not a good day for him. If you want me to go, I can't come this Friday.
Okay, so Monday?
And we could do Saturday morning.
Uh, just right in graduation and I have a wedding on Saturday, so.
Yes, you can.
Good.
Sometimes you shut.
That's over it, that's over it.
I, I think we really do need to be mindful of Doug right now.
Yeah, so let's, I'd say we'll start in Monday.
Yeah, let's start from Monday.
And email change with Doug and see where he's at.
Okay.
Doug's probably going to be early. I think he's coming in kind of early.
He's been early in the mornings.
Yeah, so that would be.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll think Monday morning.
Okay.
And we're going to hold him either tonight or first thing tomorrow. And, you know, if he doesn't respond tonight, we're just, you know, we'll do our best to make it happen quick. Um, can I read the letters?
Yeah, I'll read the letters. Everybody go get their hot chocolate. Okay, this is a letter from a butter, Laura Hamlin. Uh, it's dated April twenty-fourth, that's what, yeah. Dated April twenty-fourth, it's actually an email. Says, "Good afternoon, Martha. I would just like to convey a present concern that we have as director of butters to the Newbury Golf Center at the recent public hearing on April ninth. As one of the numerous conditions to the lifting of the cease and desist order and allowance of the resumption of construction, the board allowed a delay in the submission of landscaping plans for the butters until the completion of all construction. My concern is that although such a delay may make logical sense for the butters on other sides of the facility, it may not be logical, logically sensible to wait until then to address landscaping issues at our end, which is of course the far target end of the range. I am specifically concerned that the developer may not wish to drop heavy equipment over this newly graded and seeded range at that point in time if doing so would cause damage. At present, there are five trees that were planted atop the ridge in front of our home by the developer last summer. This ridge, of course, was previously disguised by dozens of mature hundred-foot trees that were imprudently removed by the developer. The removal has created a bare ridge as the horizon seen from our yard and is, and is the view from seven rooms in our house, including our living room, dining room, master bedroom, and office. The bare ridge is literally the first thing I see every morning when I rise, I raise my bedroom shades. This will be our view for six months of the year that the trees have no foliage. More importantly, it will also be our unobstructed, obstructed view for at least twelve months of the year that the developer intends to have nighttime lighting on his range, as you can see from the photos of the ridge that I am attaching. The five trees planted, best described as a good start from a purely aesthetic standpoint, can possibly anticipate, can possibly be anticipated to provide any significant blocking or sufficiently mitigate effects from LED lights on fifty-foot poles located on both sides of the furthermore most target green. I do not need to wait until completion of construction to know this. The amount of unobstructed daylight apparent now on the ridge is evidence how visible and inclusive the proposed LED lighting would be in the otherwise darkness. The pure opinion expressed by the town hired lighting expert, Mr. Stern, in his first letter, in which he compared the proposed lighting to that which an automotive retailer would use, and opined that such lighting would be inappropriate in this residential neighborhood is testament to this. The five trees that were planted appear to be of an evergreen variety about ten feet tall and located atop a berm are some distance apart, perhaps necessarily for future growth, and were planted toward the eastern edge of our property. Their chosen location and alignment might have made sense from the perspective of looking downrange from the future T-area, but their location from the perspective of our home and yard looks odd as they leave two-thirds of the bare ridge directly in front of our homes still bare, including the more westerly portion of the ridge that is viewable from our front door, living room, dining room, master bedroom, and driveway. Since we anticipated requesting additional landscaping along the ridge for most aesthetic and screening purposes, we believe it is prudent to convey these concerns now instead of delaying until construction of the facility is completed so that the developer has the ability to perform such further landscaping work prior to the preparation of seeding this range and while he is still using heavy equipment near our ridge during his ongoing grading efforts. I will forward a few photos of the ridge as viewed from our home and front yard in separate emails. I am always available to discuss further if you have any questions. Incredibly, I anticipate being unable to attend the next public meeting on June fifth and do not wish to wait until then anyways to offer our input regarding landscaping concerns as director of butters, especially since our concern may not mirror those of other butters whose homes are situated differently. I am sure that both boards are sensitive to the fact that each of butters is impacted in a way unique to them. If you could please share this email with Damon and Rachel for the consideration, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Laura Hamlin, Frank Heaney, one sixty-seven Scotland Road, Newark. Sure.
Received June third, two thousand nineteen. Martha, as a follow-up to your visit to our property on May with Damon and Rachel, I wanted to provide the following reference to relevant comments made at prior public hearings in this manner. During the initial site walk conducted on July eighth, two thousand seventeen, Selecton Justerson, after observing that the markers for the tree cut line were top the ridge line at the target end of the proposed driving range, which abuts our front yard, suggested that the tree cut line be moved back about twelve feet. At the public hearing three days later on July eleventh, two thousand seventeen, Selecton Justerson again expressed concern about the tree line being cut along the ridge line stating, "The reason I ask is because when you cut at the ridge line, the people looking up from the other side will see essentially open sky, whereas if you cut back another ten or fifteen feet, they'd still be looking at trees. Their visual disturbance to me would be significantly less." That's quoting me, very odd. Comment is about two nineteen fifty-six on the video of the recording of the public hearing. Mr. Sorensen and his representatives in response told the boards that the tree cut line had been moved back fifteen feet since the site walk. When the clear cutting was actually performed eight months later in March two thousand eighteen, we observed all trees atop the ridge line being cut down along the line that seemed to be, seemed to us to be exactly where the markers were during July eighth, two thousand seventeen site walk. Regardless, the result of the clear cutting that was done is exactly what you observed during your recent visit to our property on May. A bare ridge line now devoid of matured trees, which if left, would have provided natural screening from both the visual open sky appearance and the foreseeable consequences of exposure to the proposed nighttime LED lighting on the other side of the ridge, a target green, at target green, number five, which is also exactly what Selecton Justerson wisely attempted to proactively protect against. The failure of Mr. Sorensen to ensure that his clear cutter protected the butters and more importantly, conformed to his promise and plan submitted to and approved by both boards should have, should have a consequence to him, especially since it has an extreme impact on the butters exposed to the proposed lighting. If his unapproved actions have caused additional and preventable injury to the butters, the board have an obligation to review proposed lighting plan and if no mitigation cannot be attained and prior nighttime lighting approval should be revoked. I also make reference to comments made during the same public hearing, seven eleven, two thousand seventeen, at about one twenty-five, twenty-three in the video by Mr. Sorensen's then engineer regarding the promised buffer zone for the Carboni property, stating that the Carbonis request, quotation, that this entire buffer be left in place and not disturbed, end of quotation. You are well aware that the unauthorized overcutting of that promised buffer area on the Carboni side of the property led to an issuance by the town of a cease and desist order four three, two thousand eighteen. I provide the above references as an aid for the board's collective consideration because so much time has elapsed since those hearings and board member comments because they are new, and board member comments because there are new members on both boards who are not present during those early meetings because I'm unable to attend the upcoming June fifth hearing. If you could please share this email with both boards and revisit the hearing, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Laura Hamlin, one sixty-seven Scotland Road, Denver, Mass. One nine five one. There are a number of pictures of the ridge line included with her letter or email. And this brings me to one of the themes that I want to talk about in the public hearing tonight. A number of times we've requested a mock-up of the lights so that we can look at them as far as mitigation plan is concerned. Uh, I spoke with our DPW director today and the town has recently acquired a bucket truck which can go up seventy-five feet. You guys have been unable to bring on any, any lights that would approximate what you. what you are proposing to use, but I think, given our ability to get something up in roughly the right range and since we know the amount of light you guys would be putting out, I think I would like to see if the board's comfortable with the idea of using the town's facilities to go out there and put something up so we could look at it from both the Carbonis property and the Hanlon property to approximate what we would see with the completed project so we can better understand what we need to mitigate for.
Well, Damon, hang on. So if you don't have a Musco light, their technology and light years are everywhere else. So to put something up there is not gonna represent it. And that's one of the things that Musco, you know, he's, they'll come and talk about it.
I understand that they are experts in what they do, but I think we know the parameters of the light. I think we can give the board a sense of what's going on. And you can you can tell us we can't come on your property and put those things up, but.
I mean, I'm not gonna do that, but I'm just, you know.
I mean, the one the one thing that's important, you don't have to give us a CI. And you can always come back in this room and say, "You can't turn the lights on," which means he will have spent a quarter of a million dollars or more of installing them. So to put up a light that isn't the right light is just gonna incite people because they're gonna think it's something different than it is. If you guys wanna contact Musco and buy a fixture from them and have them set it properly and correctly and open it and wire it, but.
Wait a minute. We're trying, he is trying very hard to to appease a situation and a concern. Now, his suggestion is we have a truck. My suggestion is you get a light.
But they they don't do that about four times?
Well, here's the deal.
About four times.
We're trying to appease a situation, okay? And do you wanna spend a quarter of a million bucks and find out you gotta get shut down? That's silly. That's really silly. So I don't I don't like that. You know? Get a light. Get something as close to it as possible. And this is gonna be a single light. This is not gonna be the entire field lit up. Else we're gonna go around, you know, seven different nights, you know, move this truck seven different locations and see what it looks like. This is this is an attempt to calm people's concerns. And I would jump on this opportunity, not resist it.
Okay, so I will get something that throws off the exact same light. I'll contact Musco and get something that throws the exact same light off as as those lights.
I think I think it's a great opportunity to appease the situation.
And it might be, you know, I'll have him recommend what it is and it will give the same light off that.
Can they put the truck back where the post is gonna go?
Yeah, it's gonna be hard.
I mean, one thing, and I know you read Hanlon's letters, and I wanna clearly distinguish Hanlon from Carboni. No trees were taken down outside of the work limit on the on the Hanlon property. Not one. There was nothing so, well, they wanna write what they wanna write in the letter. There was nothing taken down along with their law line that is in violation of.
A concern has always been lighting. Concerns have been lighting. Let's try to address the, let's try to calm concerns and facilitate the process. That would be my suggestion.
One thing I'm.
Go ahead, Mike.
It's like, are these lights anywhere in the state?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where?
And so they're down at Leo J. Martin. And some of the board has gone down.
Is anyone down to see the board lights?
Yeah.
We've got, we've got.
Okay, what's what are they like?
You know, it's, I think it's it's difficult to see them in that setting and see them in this setting because you're dealing here with an extreme elevation change from the road to the back of the site. And Leo J. Martin, it's fairly level. They're relatively close together. So I don't think it's really apples to apples.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, it's also not apples to apples because of Leo J. Martin. They have trails around their driving range, so the lights, so these lights have backs and sides to them. So there's zero light intrusion LED fixtures and they have heads, sides and backs that take the light and focus the light downward. So on Leo J. Martin, not only are they illuminating the range, but there's also, I believe, there's like concrete trail and there are other things that go around the outside of the range. So they're not as tightly focused, but they do give you a good sense of what a zero light intrusion light fixture looks like.
The other thing I would like to suggest, since I was out there with Damon and Martha and I saw what, and I can show you here, saw what they saw. A guy would suggest which in the long run is gonna help you regardless of whether they like those, is to continue the planting along the top of that berm.
Well, that that isn't part of the approval, and I believe there's, we have the tree farm.
All right, but I would suggest that you get it done sooner before you start doing all sorts of finish work down there because it is a big hole. The trees that are planted are kind of over here and we can see them, but there's this big gap.
So, oh, 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 hi. So the agreement we've had with everybody is we would come back with landscaping plans when the site was stabilized and the and the topography was laid out so that everyone can get at the right elevations of luck. If you wanna, and again, I do believe the Hanlon side is different to Carboni's side.
Right, the only concern is that we don't want you to wait until you've already seeded that and be not just a finished grain, but a finished grass and not wanna drive down there to plant a tree.
So let me ask you a question, and I have a look, but consistent with your decision, if we presented you a landscaping plan on that end, could you approve just that even though it wouldn't be exactly consistent with H? Or would you modify H to allow us to submit a?
Subplan.
A subplan along the Hanlon property line and come in and do something in the interim? But I I guess if we spend the time and the money and the planning now, I would wanna be careful that we don't have to go back and do it again.
Well, you may have to go back and add to it. I mean, that's always been our understanding, you know, regardless of what the plan you submit is. We can approve a landscape plan, but if after that plan goes in, it does not do what the abutters needed to do, it's always been the understanding that you would go back and add whatever had to be added. Not we do it, not.
Right, so why don't we just wait for the end? We'll bring up coming out there.
If you're happy, if you're fine with having to drive out there to do it.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? So let me make, let me make a suggestion. If you can amend H that allows an interim plan, that would be great. If you can talk to our arborist and you can talk to Mike and ask them whether or not there would be harm weeding to do it till the end or there might be some benefit to you to do something in the interim, then they would have the authority to approve an interim plan. But so long as the condition didn't mandate an interim plan right now, but gave you the authority to deal with that, would that work? And then he can get Neil out there, the you you've met Neil. You guys like Neil, he does a good job. We'll get Neil out there, we'll have Neil take a look, and then we can talk to Miller and find out whether there is or is not some benefit to doing it sooner rather than later. Does that make sense?
Do you have any ever a finished mitigation plan of how many trees we're gonna go along that ridge line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
We've already, we planted a hundred and thirty-three trees out there, right?
Right, but the thing is that we're talking about a specific, a specific area.
So, I mean, I think if that plan wasn't in place, the idea was, you know, that was kinda waiting to see what the lighting intrusion was gonna be.
Right, that, well, that's that's a possibility. It's like, but my concern and Laura Hanlon's concern was that you get to the end of this and then you say, "Oh, I don't wanna drive out there over my brand-new grass."
Hundred, hundred percent. Again, it's gotta be, I love the way you guys did the conditions last time. It gave you the authority to do things, but it didn't necessarily mandate specific things. One concern I would have, and again, I'm thinking out loud. You plant trees and then it's all them in the wrong place and you gotta take them out.
Right.
So there may be some benefit to waiting, there may be some benefit to not. If we add a modification to that condition, you can talk to Neil and Miller. They'll be out at the site on Monday. If it's something that can get done, great. But this way, it's not a promise that we will do it, but.
Well, you don't have to, well, you don't have to tell us when. But you do have to tell us that you need to fill in this ridge.
So so let me ask you a question, and that's a great, so if you take a look at this ridge, and let's say that no tree was removed from this ridge line.
So these are the new trees, these are the new trees.
I'm saying.
Regardless of what trees were removed and not removed, that's not the point at this point. The thing is, the trees were removed, the trees that were removed is what gives them this view.
But those were proved trees to be.
Doesn't matter.
If I, if I could, the the theory is that we have an obligation to replant to the extent that we violated the orders or that we're causing a problem with the lighting and we're protecting against the lighting. So if one of the lights is over here and one of the lights is down here, and when they're there, you realize you can't see this one because it's lower than the ridge and you can't see this one because, in fact, the tree line on this side is covering it, then going and putting ten trees in here isn't solving it. And if you can see it and it, let's say the light, the top of the light is right here, you want the trees here, you don't want them here. At the end of the day, if they're looking out at open sky and they don't see light and it's just open sky, does he actually?
They didn't have open sky before.
They did because it was a hundred-inch wood and lot. But then, we all agree that as long as we didn't intrude on them by what we were doing, we have the right to remove trees.
No, no, I don't think there's an argument with that. I think what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that there isn't light scattered in their.
Absolutely positive, what?
So I think that there's a couple of steps to do that. One is Damon's suggestion is a very expensive suggestion and you can start to really make people feel a lot more comfortable because you're gonna be putting it at that furthest, that furthest point. That's the first point they're gonna wanna see.
Right.
Okay, and then you go to the next point, you know, and you get to see, and then you'll have an appreciation of what you need to do for light mitigation control. So I think, I think rather than than split hairs, we just take Damon's direction, try to facilitate it and just just keep them all going.
When we walked the site that day, there was a huge boulder over here. And that was roughly, remember I stood on the boulder? And we pointed out that was gonna be the location of the farthest light.
Yeah.
So that's here. So if that's the location, that's my only concern, is if a light is way over here, I honestly don't believe we would have an obligation to plant trees in here if there's no light scatter that's impacting that.
I I have a comment.
Yeah?
I don't know, hopefully somebody can answer. According to Laura Hanlon's letter, she is alleging, for lack of a better word, that the cut line, the tree cut line, had been moved back fifteen feet since the site walk that we approved. Is that true?
I don't, I don't know where those stakes, it's hard to say at this point whether or not there was any movement back or whether or not it was something that was discussed and agreed to and that never actually happened on the formal plans. So I don't know the answer to that question.
Does Joe know nothing, any idea?
No, I I doubt it. I mean, I think it was really discussion that came out of that that first site walk, that July site walk.
So if she's saying that this is, and she's pretty explicit, two hours, nineteen minutes, fifty-six seconds on the video of the public hearing.
I'm sure that what I said, that she quoted me exactly. What I'm not sure about is whether or not the plan ever reflected the discussion that was had at that time. And that's what I I can't definitively say. We'd have to go back and get the plans that were submitted prior to that, that we were discussing and the plans that were submitted afterwards. There may never have been a move in what was actually submitted to us, but we assumed, given the discussion, that there had been. And so that's what I don't know.
Well, if we approved a project based on this fifteen feet shifting the cut line forward, then we need to find that answer over because I feel that I was comfortable voting on the project to approve to approve it with the cut line being what I thought it was gonna be. I felt as if there was gonna be an adequate buffer. And if that did not occur, then I'm not comfortable moving this project forward without significant mitigation to that.
So I think what this comes back to is a subclause that Mr. Rosen was talking about, allowing for the development of a mitigation plan at that end and not precluding mitigation for the Carboni and other sites. And I think that I've had a nod from town council that that is fine and we can create such a clause within H, was it? I forget.
H, yeah.
So I think we can, we can start to address this proactively. We can look back and see it, you know, go through the plans, tie the dates and see if there was a shift or not a shift and address that at a later meeting because I don't think we have the information we need right now to address it fully.
Okay.
I would also suggest, and I'm not saying there was or was not a shift in the line. I don't think you can look at one moment in time in hearing. You would have to look at whole hearing. Because there could have been a discussion at one point about moving it twelve feet. Then there could have been further presentation and you could have then said, "No, let's move it twenty." And then you could have come back and said, "No, let's move it six." And I know there was a lot of discussion at that point about whether it was gonna be okay to bury stumps there and build a berm and whether the berm would help and was the concern collecting the golf balls or mitigating light? There were a lot of different things. So my only caution would be, don't look at ten seconds of the tape.
I'll go watch the whole public hearing.
If you're gonna go watch, watch the hearing and then you can see if we can identify the plans.
Thank God we have public access program.
Brian, do you have any, any concerns?
No, I mean, my, if I could elaborate, am I not? It was that I don't think you necessarily need a new condition or an amended condition. It may be wise however to memorialize what you're doing in a new condition. But what what G and H do is require something upon building driveway and lighting. And then they have to, they're required to, they must submit that plan and or must approve it. It doesn't say that they can't do things in the interim.
Prior to.
So there's nothing to stop the applicant right now from putting together a proposal that addresses that need and bringing it to the board, saying, "We'd like to do this until we get to that point. And then we'll flesh it out with a full, you know, landscaping plan, mitigation plan in compliance with this paragraph." So I don't think there's anything standing in the way of you proceeding on on that. That being said, it's fine. We're gonna be back before the board and you wanna memorialize that in a condition that reflects that understanding, all the better.
Well, I guess to me, you know, that would kicked it around a few times. I mean, it doesn't matter to me whether it happens now or it happens at the end, as long as it happens.
I just don't wanna do it twice.
So so the concern is doing it twice or having to move trees once you see a building up or something different. But to to address your concern, I do still think it's worth talking to Neil and and Miller and confirming that we're making it perfectly clear to them right now that they may have to install trees at the far end later. And if they do, we can't come back in front of this board and say, "We can't do it. We can't get a truck out there."
I think, I think inherently this whole thing is what Rachel and Damon and Peter alluded to is the fact that if you have light impacts on the neighbors and then not mitigate it, you're not gonna get your occupancy from it.
Correct. Or we're gonna have a condition on it that says we can't turn the lights on.
On that last light or whatever.
Yep.
So, I mean, you you're not gonna get away with when this is done, not taking care of the light.
I've said that from day one, though. Except day one with the neighbors, what trees are. I haven't changed my answer.
There are no other questions from my board at this time or your board? I think we should open up to public comment.
So where do we stand before we move this? Where do we stand with the light?
The light test.
The light test, where do we stand with that?
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna get something that represents the Musco lighting from Musco or he's gonna recommend something, then I'll contact.
So let me ask you a couple of questions. The truck that you have, does it have power?
I don't know. I know it's got some power outlets on it. I don't know, it'll depend on what is required to run them, but if they're LEDs, it should have it on power. And if not, we can.
Tom has a generator, they can hook up to the truck and bring out there. So I don't know how you would connect it to the bucket. Does the town have an engineer that would do that, like run a, I guess it'd have to be some type of outdoor application cable? Like, somebody would have to come up, create like a seventy-five-foot extension cord to go.
Yeah, we'd have to, you know, once you figure out what light it is, we figure out how much power it takes. We, you know, there'd be some conversations back. there'd be some conversations back and forth to make this test happen.
Okay.
So, you know, depending, seventeen hundred lumen light is I think what is in the plans. Add an LED, I don't, I don't know how much that draws. And so, you know, we just have to find out what has to happen, and then we figure out how to make it happen.
You gotta find out from him, what it would take on a generator to run it? How thick, like is it gonna take an eight gauge, ten gauge, twelve gauge cable? What's it gonna take? And then he's gotta tell you whether or not they can create a mechanism that's gonna create a pigtail, but it'll come out of the light fixture that would plug into some type of mock-up of an extension cord to come in and come down and plug into a generator.
Yeah. Can just be a school of cable at that point.
To be honest, I don't know what the recommendations for the lights are, but plenty of subdivisions and plenty of, you know, sites that have work on homes. They're running ten and twelve gauge regular house, you know, wire that is in your house into the job site, and people just plug it into that. So if we had to have the town's electrician, you know, wire the light with ten gauge wire, and still enable it to get into the generator, we probably could.
You gotta ask him that, and you gotta ask him whether or not they have to put a switch in the cord, so that he can, like, he might have to do it with a regulator and turn it on. So you gotta find out what he would need. I'm happy to, like.
No, I'll talk to him. Maybe the one thing, if they don't give light, he's gonna make a recommendation that's similar. Because I'm asking for a light or a mock-up light, and if they don't do.
Or he's gonna make you buy one.
So, I don't know.
Okay.
And this is something that's done for architectural projects all the time. You know, mock-ups of walls and light fixtures and everything.
I understand that, but this is sports lighting, I think, you know.
I still can't see that it's not possible.
Did he email you and tell you that this is, he was unable to, to do this?
I've asked him four times.
He's asked him, and I, myself have called and asked him.
Yeah, you've, yeah, I've asked. Every time you've asked me to do that, I've asked him, and he's like, Eric, I don't do it. We do not give lights out, we don't do demos, we just don't do it. Recommend sites that we've done, like the Leo J. Martin, you know, range. I know they've done Patton Park and Hamilton, they've done other places, other parks around.
So your, your question was an email, has it emailed them?
Right.
Has it emailed them?
No, we've called them.
I've called them. I mean, I can check, I've spent four times, I've spent two and a half years. So I mean, I'm constantly in contact with them, so I can find out.
Why don't you get that written?
Sure.
And I think, you know, provided that he's not gonna give you a light, we will all look at it, understanding that his lights are better controlled, more shuttered, will have less spill, but it gives us something to work from as far as what the mitigation is. Any further questions, or can we open up to public? All right.
Come on out.
Come on out. So first thing, I wanna make sure, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired of work conditions going past five o'clock. I feel like the nosy neighbor, I can't help it, I'm at my kitchen window, and I see it. Three times, I'm tired of it. So if you want to be the neighbor, you need to respect me also. Secondly, Jimmy Cunningham also needs lights. Somehow, somebody figured out behind her house, because she's also involved with this. Third, when the lights do come up, do we get to see it? That light up, do we?
Of course.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, I think that's the issue that we get. But work conditions that pass five o'clock has to stop. That one, a couple weeks ago, at six o'clock, is ridiculous, totally ridiculous. And I have proof, people at my yacht, it's ours, it's not just me. And I have video of it, which will know. Has to stop. And I understand that you're behind, I understand all that, but that's not my problem. Thank you, and thank you for the lights, I appreciate it.
Hi, Jimmy Cunningham, 143 Scotland Room. I'm a direct advisor. Multiple times, I've talked to Eric. I'm reserving the right to see how that driveway looks, because that's gonna be on my side of the property. And I, you know, don't wanna stop planting things and all that kind of stuff until I, I see it and know what it's gonna look like. And he's been generous in saying that, you know, once it's there, and, you know, if I have any issues, to put some more trees in and whatnot. But I just want that out there, and I, you know, I am just as affected as everybody else. And, but I'm trying to wait and see what it looks like. I mean, he's got a grave that's gonna be ten feet, did you say ten feet? Ten feet down, and so I don't know how those headlights in or the lighting is gonna look. So I wanna, I'd like to see the lighting, but I'd also like to reserve, you know, what happens, and not get too ahead of ourselves until that's there, and we can see what it actually looks like. And how that elevation and all of that is gonna affect it.
We don't always stay in there, but we do include your name.
I hope so, because I don't feel like I'm included sometimes. I'm just one of those tomahawks.
I apologize.
And he does abut me on three sides, so, you know.
We always consider that you're, you're one of the abutters.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, well, I think, if there's no further public comment, I guess I wanna talk with my board, with my board and your board about the next steps, setting up another public hearing, or any other concern, or things that you guys wanna see moving forward.
I'd like to talk about, about the working light, how are we gonna, how are we gonna address that?
Are you guys to deliberate on that, and I just provide our insight on that?
Go.
Sure. Okay. So, I believe Mr. Sorensen talked with you at a site meeting after it occurred.
The first time.
The first time that it occurred. And you told him that he needed to communicate with you if this was ever to be an issue again. The second time that it happened, he sent an email at 5:02 to twelve public officials, letting them know that they had a circumstance where they were trying to make sure that the site was stabilized before they left for the night. And there was a storm coming, and that Mr. Miller recommended that they not walk off the site without finishing something. He detailed it in an email. He got an email back from the building inspector six minutes later, saying, thank you. Nobody responded, and no one said, stop, don't do it. I, I certainly, without a doubt, the Carbonis have every single right to be upset, to reach out to the town, why was he working that day, what's going on? But at the same time, it's been two months now since Mr. Miller's been on the job. And I think you'll all agree that he is doing an excellent job with the site. If there is a circumstance, and they're almost done something, there is impending weather coming, and he's just trying to do something to lock up the site for the night, would, I'd want you to take that into consideration when you discuss this. Because I do think it is important to note that at 5:02, Eric emailed, and at 5:08, the building inspector emailed back and said, thank you. And none of the twelve other people on the email responded and said, stop, stop working, don't do anything. It was only at six o'clock or so, when you got the call from the Carbonis, that Eric then heard from you, and obviously by then they had already stopped. But I, I do think, you know, for the interests of keeping mud out of the road, keeping water out of flowing to the road, keeping bad things from happening. In the past two months, it has happened twice. And we readily admit it, the second time it happened at 5:02, twelve members of the town got an email from Eric telling them what was going on and why. And so I just, I, I think that's important as you discuss this particular topic.
So I think the good thing is that you got a response from the building inspector, who's probably the primary individual to respond as quickly as he did. You know, not everyone has one of these in their pocket all the time, or is looking at email every three minutes. If there is a crisis, I think a phone call is the way to go, or a text message. Unfortunately, emails can go into one of those little quasi, their third or fourth in the reports list. And you look at them maybe at the end of the day. So if there is something really important, you know, the old-fashioned way, phone call.
But we had agreed that that's how the.
No, no.
We agree that communication.
No, no, no. But, 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 you know, again, you know, if it's, if it's crisis.
The prob, the problem was that the abutters weren't on the list.
The abutters didn't know.
That's my point, why don't we notify?
Why do you wait till 5:02? Because you know you're gonna work and get the stuff stabilized. Why would you wait till 5:02?
And all, if, if we had sent.
It's not Miller that we don't trust. That's the problem, it's not Miller.
So if we had sent an email at 4:30 instead of 5:02, the exact same thing would have happened, which is the abutters would have come home.
No, I think, I think that, I think that you have to be mindful that you are a, located in a residential district. The town has allowed you privilege, and it's a privilege to work in, to have a business in a residential neighborhood. I think, until I'm proven otherwise wrong, I think it would be the neighborly thing to do, to knock on the door and say, I am so sorry, we need to button this up, I have to secure the site before the rains come. I just think it's common courtesy. And I think, I think that until you hear differently from the neighbors, that you knock on their door and that they slam the door in your face, well, that's a whole other story. But I really think that communication would go a long way into solving a lot of your problems.
And so far, the communication has been better. So, I did get the email. I got the email, I appreciated the notice. Unfortunately, like I said, the problem was that the abutters didn't get the email. So, you know, and so then it kinda rolled into more than it had to be. And I got it at midnight, so there was obviously nothing I could do about it at that point. So, but once I saw Sam respond, I figured everything was cool.
And, and I thought we did as well. I mean, Sam responded five minutes later, and I think everyone was like, okay, the town knows, Sam knows. And, and Mr. Miller wrapped it up as quick as he could and, and got it done. But, to your point, a knock on the door would have done better.
I mean, you're right there.
Yep.
And furthermore, you should be planning better so that you can wrap the end of the day before five o'clock. But that said, you know, when I responded, I'd gotten multiple phone calls, emails from the abutters, and then finally got back to seeing the email from you. So I had jumped, as Peter said, you know, phone calls and texts came to my attention well before the email stream, which I got back to after I'd already responded. So, A, plan the work so you don't have to work late. If you know something's gone haywire, or there's a storm coming, and, you know, we've allowed the driveway cut, and you need to be working late, get ahold of the neighbors and talk to us in person. Because that's what we need to, so that we can respond to people and say, oh, this is what's going on.
Can I ask a suggestion? Because, again, we had agreed it would be by email, and we agreed to what the twelve names would be. I presume you don't want us calling twelve people? Should there be a primary, should it be one of the two of you, should it be Sam?
I think this is common sense stuff now. We have two point people, and we have a building inspector, and you have three neighbors.
Okay. You got their text.
Do I have your numbers right?
Yeah, I don't have either your phone number.
Okay, so please, please, just do, do common sense time.
Peter's right. You need to have this in writing, you need to get it going very quickly. And you're asking us to get out into two areas that are very prone to flooding. And it doesn't bode well for me right now to hear this stuff. So, plan further ahead, and in writing, set up how you're gonna let the folks know if something happens at four o'clock, and you know you're gonna have to work late. Because you're going over the hill and right next to the road. And if the storm's coming, you probably shouldn't even be there that day anyway.
Correct.
And please understand, none of us, I think none of us up here, wanna hold this project down. I think we wanna see it go as fast as you can, so.
Faster than that.
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
And I think the abutters feel the same, the same way. So I understand the rain is, is tough, but put yourself in their shoes.
I understand.
Yep. Could I trouble, and we'll do a list right now, and could we just get numbers that you would like us to put on? What I'll do is I'll scan this in, so that if we have a record, I'll send it to you. So we have a record, who's gonna be on the tax list, or I'll send it to Mark.
The emergency.
The tax list, yep. I wrote emergency at the top, okay.
You gotta get a way to get the neighbors in on the, you know.
I'm gonna, I'm giving them that, how to paper next.
I mean, hopefully the weather is gonna start to formulate a different pattern. It seems by the amount of rain projected for June and July, it's going to do that. But let's hope.
You never know.
You never know.
When do you think we'll do the next public hearing?
That's, that's what we're gonna discuss now. So, next steps, next public hearing.
Joe, Sam's. I've seen Dr. Phil been a hundred times.
Because I think, I think by and large, things are moving in the right direction. I don't know that we need one immediately, I don't know if there's anything you would like.
No, I think, you know, once you come out, you're comfortable with it, confident you will be with, with Joe and Mike involved, and Dr. John Miller. He's a pretty knowledgeable guy. He'll give you his thoughts on the driveway, and what he's gonna do. So, you know, after that, I mean, he's off and running. So, obviously, constant communication with your Damon reports, your WTA's hook reports. I call Sam every week. I call, I haven't called Doug the last two weeks, so I know he's had health issues. But I'm in constant contact with Sam, I don't know if you know that, if he's reporting that at all. But I am talking to him, so the communication's open with what's going on.
So I guess, my question for you is, do you want to have another public hearing in July?
I don't think we need it.
So let me, let me ask you a question. What's the next thing on the list if they agree to meet and then modify E and F? Is there anything else that we would have to get in front of the board for to discuss the first week in August?
Yeah, I think.
What about landscaping, when do you think you'll have a landscaping plan on?
Well, I think, I thought we agreed that we wanted to see the buildings and see the sightlines before we do anything, so we're not doing it twice.
So when do you would like to have the more building to live in?
I mean, they're ready, hopefully, they're gonna, I mean, it really depends on weather within the next couple of weeks to start the buildings. It just depends, I mean, tomorrow could be a wash, so I, you know, I would like to see the building started in two weeks. I mean, that's our goal, to get those, but it could be three. And it's only gonna take them a week and a half to put up the first building. So, you know, it could be the first week in July, and by the first week in August, both buildings will.
Will be up.
Will be up. They're not gonna be finished, the inside, but they'll be up.
I think August makes sense.
The first week?
I think the first week in August.
I think if you, from both accounts, if both buildings are gonna be up, I would like to do a site walk, walk to show the boards to see the buildings before the meeting. I think that makes more sense than meeting and then scheduling.
So if we did own a planning board, right, it would be the seventh? That would be the seventh of August.
I think that should be the ninth.
You think what?
Should we meet at your, at your meeting on seven?
On seven, so we'd want to walk before.
Wednesday?
Right.
So what is the, your meeting on the seventh, so August third, Saturday?
That's true.
We should still be able to discuss, right?
We're in conflict.
So, I think nine o'clock is when we've been doing them? So we'll have a site walk to which the abutters are invited on Saturday, August third. And we'll continue, have, do you have any other public hearings scheduled, 7:15 on?
Not at the moment.
You guys aren't planning that far out? Okay.
Don't jinx us.
We may think that this is gonna be the first on the list.
And, given the amount of rain we've been having, do we want to have a rain date for the site walk on the fourth? Or do we just wanna say it's the third, and we'll walk around in the rain?
The rain's gonna stop by then.
Yeah.
Oh, you're August. Okay. Well, since you guys are such good weathermen, we'll just, we'll set that. August third, nine o'clock is the site walk.
Mike and Sam would say a rain date, is do we have to post it like that?
These are not, we don't discuss things with them, so they can't.
Right.
These are not, we don't discuss things with them, so they might come in here. It's information gathering, but I think we'll just do the third. It's simpler.
And I think if we have to do the boards as that day approaches, we can just send it to Mike.
Okay.
It's not a meeting.
No.
It would just be the butters and you, not the public.
Right.
A site walk.
And then, I don't think there's anything else we need to do. So if I could get a motion from my board to continue the public hearing to August seventh at seven fifteen, that would be great.
I move to continue the public hearing till August seventh at seven fifteen P M.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Take a motion? Want to find a board?
And if we continue our public hearing on this matter until August?
Seven.
Seven fifteen.
Seven fifteen ten. Second, do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All in favor?
And if I could get a motion from my board to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
You can get something with a strap.
I know, I gotta get something. It's like, I gotta do something.
I will.
Day by day, but we'll be in touch.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah?
Well, thanks.
I think like a suit. My buddy, I said, he's been unhappy. He's been unhappy.
How old's the puppy?
Seven months. Goodnight, folks.
Goodnight, Mike.
Hi.
All right. He would made an escape, a great escape. He had to get back.
So we will continue with new business. We've had a request from the board of selectmen to redo the wireless communications again to try to solve holes that we have in our coverage. And I know enough about this to know I don't know enough about this to try to figure out what the technology, where the technology is right now, and in terms of what the best way to go forward is to try to fill holes. So I know we have small cell technology things going on. And we got everybody in the brother and the whole world fighting over 5G. And we're not quite sure where we're going. So we think it makes sense to try to hire a consultant to do an analysis of the coverage in the town and to hopefully come up with some sort of recommendations to how to fix the lack of coverage in the dead areas. So that's kind of a scoop on that one.
Right, and I did, I did tell back to the selectmen that it was really needed. We needed some professional input on this. And Tracy's aware, and I think we'll fund that. So I think the question really is, how do we go about finding that consultant? I don't think that we need to put out an RFQ, but I will. I didn't have a chance to talk with Tracy about that before tonight, so.
Do we have a list of vendors or do you have a, I'm not used to the local government limits. Do you have a limit on what you have to bid on and what you can just contract for?
I think it's really the procurement law. And for professional engineering services, there's more latitude there. So as far as I know, there's no preferred list of vendors. I think one thing I'd like to do is talk with town council to see if she has dealt with this and our communities and dealt with, you know, worked with any vendors or consultants.
I know Worcester, because all the things that towns that I know have done studies are just way larger than we are, you know, like City Lowell, City Worcester. And I don't, I'm not aware of smaller towns that have done this.
Right, it's rural and they're more.
With more places to put, yeah, more structures to put equipment on. So, so I guess we'll just try to figure out who the vendors might be and.
All right, so I'll talk with Tracy and I'll talk with Lisa and let you all know what comes out of that and what the process needs to be. It would be way too soon to try to do this for the fall town meeting, so our target will be next April, 2020.
You need the revised?
For the revised by law.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. You know, technology is moving so quickly.
Yeah, you read all sorts of conflicting information as they were.
Moving forward on the right items.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think that's one of the concerns, is moving so quickly and.
And some, you have some carriers.
The towers might be out and the grid layers would have.
Well, I think that's the way it'll probably go. It's just a matter of whether we have enough structures or how we would structure the structures to get it going. Because it'd have to be on telephone poles, you know, whereas, you know, urban situations can use buildings and other things.
Especially in some of the less populated parts of town.
Right.
But I think the biggest issues, as I understand it, really are their issues down on Plum Island and issues in areas that are in the shadow of Old Town Hill. I don't know whether there are any. Do you guys experience any issues in Byfield? Well, actually, and it's interesting too. I, I listened to a lot of people talk about the issues down Plum Island and Ramtown where I've never had an issue.
I think it depends on the carrier.
Yeah, definitely.
Because Sprint has always been kind of, as well.
All right. The July schedule, I think we already tackled.
Yeah, I think we did.
We'll be here the third.
Meeting on the third. Not taking that week off.
Old business as a master plan, I think.
Yeah, this is really just, as I said, you know, it's really mea culpa. A lot of it's been in my court. We did a big push last spring on the natural resources element. John Weiss did review that before he left and had some comments, I think particularly pertaining to stormwater. There was a lot of information in there that was really taken specifically from the NITD's general permit, which probably is more information than was needed. But he was suggesting that we might be able to condense, condense it. And I haven't had a chance to look at that. And the other section is the historic resource, historic and cultural resources element. I did get a revised draft from the historical commission, and they had some more things that they wanted to look at, but I just haven't had time to really follow up with them. So I guess this is, you know, partly a request to see if we can, you know, at least reconstitute some working groups to focus on these things and also to make sure that all the board members, you know, express interest in either being appointed to the master plan committee or reappointed to the committee, because everybody's expiring at the end of this fiscal year. And traditionally, all board members have been part of the committee and kind of the lead group on this effort. I had really hoped that we could get it done before John Weiss left. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, so we'll have to try to.
Give them a go back.
And he did say he would help remotely, but you know.
Did you ask him what he's doing?
I don't know if that's realistic or not, so.
And what is the end date that everyone's term expires?
June thirty.
Oh, of this year.
Yeah, so the selectmen will be going through a round of reappointments. Some committee members have already said that they don't want to be reappointed. Some have said that they do, but it's a much smaller group than what we started with. And.
You want to apply?
Yeah, so if you just wanna send a email of interest to Ellen and get you on the list. I think the selectmen will be doing their appointments. I think they're only meeting once in June, so it'll be the second, whatever that fourth Tuesday is in June. So they'll be doing the appointments then, but I'm not a hundred percent sure about that. Community Opportunities Group, our consultant did say that they would, they would take everything and pull it all together. But they're waiting to see exactly how much work that is before we get a fee estimate. I have talked with Tracy about that. And the other thing we need to finalize is the maps from Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And I've talked to Gerard. It doesn't look like that's gonna be a heavy lift. We might be able to do some of that with local technical assistance time. But we've got $10,000 left in our budget, I think.
Does that carryover?
That part of it does. I had also requested from FY seventeen to eighteen, I think, a carryover, 3,000 from the planning board budget that wasn't extended, but that's gone. Since we didn't extend it, we can't do it for future. Okay. So that's kind of where it stands.
So it's really just those two chapters, or two segments that?
It's really those two segments. The other one was.
And then putting it all together.
Right, the other one that was kind of hanging was the transportation section. Tony Comornet from NVPC has finalized that, but the whole committee has never had an opportunity to review it.
Oh, I think it's done.
Yeah.
It's good.
Hopefully, it's good.
It's good, it's terrific.
But I really want to get this done before the 2020 census, because our data is, you know, it's already kind of behind. So we just, we need to finish it up. So any thoughts that anybody has would be great.
So everybody has to send a letter of interest to Ellen?
Yes, I think, yeah. Just a quick email saying we'd like to be reappointed. Thank you. Or be appointed for the first time if you're not.
And people, I would then, that our boards can send an order of interest to be appointed to working on the master plan?
Yeah, I mean, we had, we, the first one was all the planning board members. And then we were trying to get representation from other boards, like the Open Space Committee, Dan Streeter, who's also on the Conservation Commission and various other.
But just conservative citizens, can they?
Sure, sure. We had, we had some resident people as well who weren't affiliated with any boards or committees. You know, I think we were trying to, I think we had maybe three or four residents who were not on boards or committees. You know, we tried to make sure that it wasn't massive. I think we had about 14 people originally on the original committee. So.
See, it seems like now, it's like if we could find a good editor, I mean, you'd be, you know, in pretty good shape. The content's all there. It's just, you know, it's just getting it into a final, you know, final version.
And the natural resources would really kind of just get a dump. We put a whole lot of information in there, and it just needs to be.
Really, yeah. Little through and make some sense of it.
Right. That was the one I was sort of gonna try to focus on, but it hasn't happened yet.
We don't have any minutes.
Oh, we did.
We do have minutes.
I did read them.
Oh, I saw them today, so.
May fifteenth.
Yeah. I'm good with them.
Well, I would move to check the minutes from April ninth and nineteenth. The May fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
Can we have a second? Yeah. Oh, you should. All in favor?
Aye.
Go back if you want.
For the town planners report, actually, this kind of overlaps with the NVPC liaison report, so I'll kind of drill two birds with one stone here. But we had our quarter of planners meeting yesterday. And Karen Cottard, the executive director, has been doing a great job of bringing in various people to, you know, provide informational sessions for. So yesterday, we actually had someone from Mass DOT talking about ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan that the town needs to do. And she had given it the same presentation to the DBW directors, I think, last month. So this is more for information, but I'll be talking with James and Tracy on what we need to do to make that transition plan happen. You know, it's a little different for us than it is from, say, a big municipality, but it has to do with accessibility to all of our town-owned buildings as well as, you know, streets and sidewalks and that kind of stuff. We also had a presentation from Vanessa Johnson Hall regarding the land conservation strategies that Essex County Greenville is undertaking right now. I think I forwarded that, the PowerPoint on that to all of you. But I also do have a couple of copies here of the publication that UMass Amherst and DCR put together on Chapter 61 programs, if anybody wants to look at one, as well as land conservation options. So if you want one now, that's great. If not, I'll have them in my office. But this does pertain to a number of properties that we're looking at now. Like the 170 Orchard Street was in Chapter 61, 277 High Road, and others that are, you know, potentially being developed. And all of those properties have to come before the town, the town has a right to exercise its first, its right of first refusal to acquire the property or waive its right. And that's actually gonna be happening. Been working with the attorney for the Tennessee Court, Hanover Street A and R, that was endorsed recently, because part of that is in chapter, and it needs to come out. And then Karen Risteben from the Essex County Community Foundation talked about the Creative County Initiative update. There's gonna be an arts and culture summit at the Cabot Theater in Beverly in September. And we had a planning workshop a couple of months ago. It's kind of the interface between the arts and planning and transportation and lots of interesting stuff. So I will send this around to you all in case you're interested. We've also been working on a couple of other things with Nate Crane, our new principal assessor, and I have been working with Gerard on the assessors map updates for 2020. So those are getting underway. And Gerard also informed us yesterday that they are contracting for a new pictometry flyover in spring of 2020. We've already signed on to it. About half of the communities in the NVPC region have signed on, and hopefully all of them will be, because we'll get the entire region.
How often do they do it?
They do it every three years.
Oh, every three years, wow.
Yeah, the last one was 2017. So if the communities sign on, the last time, I think it was limited, not all of them did. We did. So our pictometry was updated, but some of the other communities didn't feel they could do it at the time. You know, there's a cost to it. It's a little over $12,000, but we've been spreading that every three fiscal years. So it's manageable. If you're a bigger community or have a theater, obviously, that's more. And the only other thing was Tony Smolik has been putting together the 2020 regional transportation plan. The only things on here. Uh, the only things on here that are impacting us right now all have to do with the Bay Area to Boston rail trail from Georgetown to Byfield. And then looking at some options for getting from Byfield up to Scotland Road. But there are some things in the transportation plan. Tony, Tony had suggested we might at one point wanna look at, um, the intersection of Boston Road and Route One, which is a pretty dicey one. We had talked as part of the, um, Master Plan Transportation Section of trying to do some improvements there to either create some passing lanes or maybe look at putting a stoplight there or something like that, because it's, it's kind of a game of chicken sometimes when you're trying to go across it.
Yes, it is.
Um, I'm always afraid I'm gonna get rear-ended if I'm coming down.
Yeah.
I'm wanting to turn.
To make it, uh, to change the layout of the road the way they do down, um, by Center Street in the Rowley area?
Similar to that, and they're actually looking at now putting a stoplight in at Center Street that's on, on this plan, because that's been a dangerous one. But yes, to do something like that, at least create the passing, or churning lane, or similar to what they've done down at Caboners.
Yeah. It, it has, that has been more helpful to, like you said, it is a game of chicken sometimes.
Yeah. And, um, you know, Mike Riley, who's Chief Riley, was in on some of those conversations and also agreed that it was, uh, an area that was worth looking at. But it's not on this plan, but something that we might think about for the future. So that's it for me.
Really?
Boy, it's a lot.
Thank you. Then we move the Board of Selectmen.
Let's see, Board of Selectmen, I should have brought their, if you guys are there, I should have brought the agenda. But, well, that was where they, they made their request for the wireless communications.
Yeah, I saw that.
That was really the biggest thing that, that affected us.
And then they get into the media board and I... I had to move along at that point. Well, I have to say I failed on the Conservation Commission to bring my notes, so. I'm afraid I can't report on the Conservation Commission, other than I also missed the site walk with them today on Ro, Roat Lane, because we had that earlier meeting.
Oh, so it was the, um, Tinkler property that they were going out to see?
Yeah.
The one that's off of Chandel Drive?
Yes, so they were very concerned about the, well, the proposed location of the house and the wetlands, so. They were going out to march around, take a look see. And, uh, there were a bunch of others that were continued, trying to think there wasn't anything, trying to think that was controversial. It was just a lot. Unfortunately, I didn't bring the right pages.
Yeah.
You don't get it tonight. Get it next time.
George isn't here to address the ZBA, but I, I was talking to Susan today, and I know one of the things that has been before them was, um, you know, the former Angie Service Station at the corner of Plum Island Boulevard and Old Point. And, um, and there's been an application before them to turn that into a restaurant and, um, use an accessory building on the abutting property as kind of an ancillary building for the restaurant function. And apparently that has been approved, um, the decision is being written. And so the next step will be for that to come before us for site line review. And I think considerations on that will be, um, you know, parking orientation on the site, how the secondary building gets used and that kind of stuff. The access is gonna be off of Old Point, so that helps alleviate congestion that might be happening. It, it would be a bad corner if they were getting in from Plum Island Boulevard, if it would.
Would they address the flooding issue with that?
Um, I don't know, 'cause I, I know when things get very bad, it kind of comes up through the cap bases. So that will be something that they will have to, you know, it'll be a redevelopment as opposed to redevelopment, so it'll be looked at a little bit differently. But with the, the additional parking, um, it's gonna be tricky. They are planning to raise the whole structure, um, you know, up on piling, so the main restaurant level will be basically accessible.
I was gonna say they're gonna have to elevate it.
Yeah. But it looks like they do want some outside seating and sidewalk level as well, so.
We'd have liked to serve this up there.
Little, little boats.
Okay, well, that's about it, unless, well, you've already gone over the planning commission, huh?
Yes.
So we already did on that.
Yeah, I was, well, I sent that out as well. So the regional housing plan has been, all the individual housing production plans have been approved. So it's official. I'll get, I will get that up on the website. And Karen Cottard was giving a presentation on that at the Mass Housing Institute in Devens today, which unfortunately I couldn't go to. But a lot of that has to do with creating affordable housing. John Weiss and I went a few years ago and it was really interesting. So I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that's related to yours?
I don't have it.
I'll move to a juror.
All in favor?